Everyone's home.
You've got it.
Maybe not. Yeah, we'll start anyway. Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P. M. on February twelfth, twenty twenty five. Time for our first regular meeting of this month. At this time, I will give the invocation and Mrs. Call will lead us in the pledge. If you could stand, that would be great. Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you this evening, two days away from Valentine's. And God, we remember that Jesus said, "We should love one another." What a perfect thing to say at Valentine's. So, God, I just pray tonight that in this community, in this state, in this country, and even in the world, we find ways, instead of being separated from people, we find ways to love them. Because that is the main thing we could do to make this world, country, state, community, better place to live. Be with us tonight as we make decisions. Help us to make decisions that are best for the people of our community. We pray all these things, in the name of your son. Amen.
You'll join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Roll call, Kelly.
Christman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz. Blair.
Here.
Call.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Schultz.
I'll second.
Yes, he has the flu. I told him he didn't need to share, so.
No.
Kelly, roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Approval of the minutes. Kelly gave us an updated set of minutes. Anybody see any problems? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll move that we accept the minutes from the January twenty-second council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Hawke. Okay, roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have a public hearing for a proposed annexation of eighty-five point six-six-nine acres. And is there anyone who wants to speak on this this evening? Mr. Denon, do you want to say anything about it in general, or we close?
You're annexing it across the road from the YMCA. Plan unit development gives the planning commission a lot more flexibility when you come to the layout and design of the eventual development of the property. And it's the way that increasingly this has moved. You can trade off, but there's rules to it. You could have, oh, in one area, higher density, but the trade off is you gotta create some more open space. And it's an interesting, it makes a whole lot more fun goodbye.
I would like to make a suggestion.
Okay.
To the developer.
Oh, okay.
Civic drive comes out, you know, T's into forty-one there. And it'd be nice if they just went right straight across the road with that civic drive and lined up with Hickory Lane at the other end, because take that dog leg out of that. I don't know if it's been talked about, or I haven't seen a platter or anything, but.
I mean, that, the civic drive thing, you're gonna make that a nice square intersection there. You're not gonna offset it.
It's a good idea. Okay, well, no other things. We'll close the public hearing. Kelly loves reading all those numbers, but I didn't read all of them, so. Do we have any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
All right, we have two council committees to hear from. First is economic strategies and cooperation. That would be Mr. Johnson's.
The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, January twenty-second, five-thirty P. M. Mr. Caleb Johnson presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mrs. Chelsea Baker, economic development director, Mr. Jody Langley, assistant fire chief, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, and Mrs. Kate Wells, OSU Community Development Director. Number one, the committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The administration advised the committee of open projects. The committee noted that there were thirty-eight open projects. Number two, Mrs. Baker advised the committee that the B R and E meetings were being scheduled for D B C. Number three, the committee noted the status of various business development projects within the downtown area. Mrs. Baker advised that a plaque would be presented to the new business for the love of Western. Number four, the committee reviewed progress with commercial development. Number five, the administration advised the committee of the positive work of small nation. The administration noted that a report would be specific to Washington Courthouse area. Number six, the administration advised the committee of continued discussions regarding the community reinvestment area. Number seven, the committee noted that discussions continued regarding the revitalization districts. Number eight, the committee noted the upcoming Groundhog Day breakfast. Number nine, Mrs. Baker introduced Mrs. Kate Wells, the new Fayette County Economic Director. And actually, Mrs. Kate Wells might be Doctor Kate Wells, if I remember correctly. So, I am so sorry, and it's gonna be amended to doctor. Number ten, Mrs. Baker referenced a possible tax incentive program for downtown businesses. Respectfully submitted myself and Mrs. Kelly Ford, foreign secretary.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Didn't catch that, but I will.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Kelly's keeping in the Valentine's theme here with these colors.
Yes.
Next month's gonna be green, just gonna tell you.
Any questions or comments about Mr. Johnson's report there?
I have a comment about his apology.
Yes.
I think it's demeaning to call somebody doctor, myself, because it takes away the commonness of him in being just a fellow human being. It sets him apart. And I just have never liked to call somebody I liked by the name of doctor, especially if it's not a medical doctor. So, anyway, that's just.
I think that's usually the reason they did that, to set themselves apart.
Yeah.
I don't know.
But, to be clear, she, actually, I only noticed it myself at the end of the meeting, whenever I looked at her business card. She never came off once as pretentious or flaunting it. I just wanna make sure I saw that, that, you know, she, she got recognition for her achievement. It's very hard to get that, and I know Mr. Hawke feels the same way. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Roll call, Kelly. Oh, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, did we get a motion?
We did not.
To accept?
We did not yet.
Oh, motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Thank you, Jim. Now, roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, next is finance and personnel. Mr. Christman.
Thank you. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at six-thirty P. M. I presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, and the official pizza sampler, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Ron Sockman, finance director, Mr. Mark Pittsick, city attorney, and Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager. Number one, the committee benefited from a report on the statement of cash for the month ending January twenty twenty-five. Number two, the committee benefited from a report on the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. Number three, the committee benefited from a review of the health care cost summary report. Number four, the committee benefited from a review of the U M R P A C E plan activity and checkpoint. That's for you, so you know what it was, report. Number five, the administration advised the committee that different health care options were beginning to be discussed. Number six, administration noted the upcoming retirement of patrolman Charlie Hughes after twenty-seven years of service. Number seven, the committee noted that Maureen Willis of the Ohio Consumer Council would be addressing counsel. Number eight, the administration advised the committee of a potential sale of one point two-five million property owned by this city, the process being to transfer the property to the C I C to execute a sale agreement. Number nine, the administration benefited from a review of financial structures regarding C R A districts and expansion options. Number ten, the committee noted discussions regarding point-two percent capital options for a ten-year term. The administration noted the benefit of tangible items for the community. Number eleven, the committee recommended that legislation be drafted for council to further consider the matter. Respectfully submitted, well, I didn't really submit it, but I'll read it. Mrs. Kelly Ford did the work. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. Any questions or discussions? Someone wanna make a motion to accept that report?
I'm going to accept the report as written.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, you are up to bat.
Thank you. We're very close to tying up electric aggregation at zero point zero eight-four-one a kilowatt hour for twelve months. It's time for us to deal with that. You can go a longer term, but at the moment, that seems to be the best situation for us. And you'll have another option of A E S's power load later on in the spring, so it'll be interesting to see what happens there. But that is the direction we're heading there. Wanted to comment earlier today, we had a very pleasant meeting with the superintendents of both school districts, and we talked about workforce development issues. And that is something where there's quite a bit of room for city, county, and two school districts, and perhaps some of the other political subdivisions to cooperate so that you better equip young people for the workforce. The income tax legislation that you have does not change the rate in any way, shape, or form. It used to be that communities had their own individual income tax ordinances. Ours was eight pages, maybe?
Eight pages.
It was fairly straightforward. The state of Ohio decided that that has to be uniform across the state, so you ended up with this new tax ordinance that is very large. But that simply updates the rules so that we are doing what we're supposed to there. And it's, there isn't anything horribly earth-shattering about it. Mark, you got any?
No, it's pretty cut and dry.
You had the public hearing about the annexation. You got a map. You know how you're zoning it, so that can move along. The fifty acres out in the industrial park, they're currently owned by the City of Washington Courthouse. You're gonna transfer those to C I C, so the C I C can execute a sale agreement based on the development of the property for industrial purposes. A resolution opposing utility proposals to increase electric and natural gas distribution rates. What this is, is the part of the electric and gas bill that is not the electric and gas. And that seems counterintuitive, but, you know, on your electric bill, you have what you actually pay for the electric and gas, and then you have all the charges associated with conveying it to you and maintaining that system. That is what they wanna go tinker with. And then you got the rock salt legislation, which I suppose we could vote no, but it'd be probably wrong, because that is something that you do indeed need. But the last couple winters, we've been very fortunate at that. You know, you haven't used a whole lot, obviously. This winter, you've used a bit more, unfortunately. And it looks like we're gonna use some more again coming up. But that is just a necessary commodity that you gotta have on hand. Anything else?
With, with the school, the two school superintendents that you talked with, was talking about workforce and so on. I think one of the mistakes school systems made was eliminating home ec and industrial arts several years ago. Is there ever any talk about bringing that back? I mean, that would be, especially industrial arts, that'd be a step towards, even home ec, I mean, towards helping students with maybe some kind of practical.
I know a number of people share that opinion. It's a opinion that I personally share also. We will convey that to both school districts. There's been quite a bit of discussion about how you can affect, more effectively do workforce development, and also the level of presence that, you know, like the Great Oak System has in the community. Those type of issues have been of particular interest of late, Ted.
It's like Mr. Sockman is not present. So, Mr. Pittsick, do you have a report, Mr. Chairman? Very good. Evidently, we don't have anybody who has signed up to speak, so we'll move into legislation. And the first of that previously introduced is Resolution number six, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution number six, twenty twenty-five, on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R six dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio, supporting the Ohio Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial America Two-Fifty dash O H.
Move for adoption.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Then new legislation, quite a little bit of that, starting with ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place ordinance number one, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number one dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance accepting annexation on application of owners and establishing original zoning districts of eighty-five point six-six-nine acres.
Ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move that we place ordinance number two, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number two dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance to amend chapter one-ten of the city income tax code to comply with the House Bill thirty-three changes.
Resolution number R seven, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move we place Resolution number R seven, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R seven dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the purchase of Balk Highway Rock Salt.
Resolution number R eight, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move we place Resolution number R eight, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R eight dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution opposing utilities proposals to increase electric and natural gas distribution rates and requesting that the Public Utilities Commission of Ohio deny the utilities' request.
Resolution number R nine, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move that we place Resolution number R nine, twenty twenty-five, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager or his designee, to transfer fifty point five-six-six acres parcel two-one-five dash zero-two-zero dash zero dash zero-zero dash zero-one-four dash zero-zero to Community Improvement Corporation of Fayette County and Washington Courthouse.
Told you Kelly liked reading all these things. Okay, Mr. Christman, do you have anything for us this evening?
I can't think of anything. Thinking about Ted taking home that.
Mr. Hawke, have you got anything this evening?
Well, like, I told Jim, I almost wish I had taken home ec, because with my wife down, I've had to learn how to run the washing machine and stuff, so maybe I would already known that. But I put a valiant effort on that kind of stuff. And this year, I got ahead of the Valentine's thing. I always try to buy my wife something practical, but I've run out of ideas, so I thought I'd get her something that was really, it's actually almost harmful to her. There was a semi upset the other day. It was crammed full of cookies. And they're trying to get rid of all those cookies, so I took a couple of boxes of those. They're pretty good-sized boxes, so I'm gonna give those to my wife for Valentine's. They're heart-shaped, they're kind of pink icing. They're, they're really pretty. And so, that should redeem me from everybody criticizing me about giving her practical stuff.
Off the road.
Ted, I'll give you a hint on that cooking. I have a George Foreman and a microwave, and if they can't do it, I don't do it.
Okay, Sylvia.
Speaking of Valentine's Day cookies, I wanna thank the YMCA. We were excited at work today. There were a couple of women who popped at the door and had a box of cookies for us, so that was a delightful way to spend our little early intervention team meeting. And we also got to steal some from the preschool side, because they were out for snow days, and we don't get this, so we ate their cookies.
Maybe off the same truck that.
It might have been off the same shop guy, I don't know. They were pretty good though, Ted.
Mr. Blair.
Mr. Chairman, in our packet tonight was the minutes for the vitality group for January. And I just have a couple things. This is the time to mention those. As you who read my year-end report noticed, the task force recommended that council look into hiring a grant writer to capture available dollars that are being realized by several of our neighboring communities. Just this week, I was made aware of a one-million-dollar vital community grant obtained by the community of Mount Vernon to fund a food hall and office suite. This effort was advanced by a collaborative effort of Jobs Ohio and their local land bank obtaining a grant to revitalize their downtown. The similarities between Washington Courthouse and Mount Vernon's downtown are very similar. The article went on to say that the redevelopment project will create twenty-five jobs and generate an annual payroll of one point two-five million dollars per year. We all know that something like this grant would open the door to increased foot traffic to our downtown, which would in turn encourage visitors to spend money and shop at other establishments. One of our task force's objectives has been to bring jobs back by bringing abandoned and vacant buildings back into productive use. I would encourage council to prioritize the hiring of a grant writer who could focus all of their energies into finding grants, like the Mount Vernon Grant, as well as available grants to help fund other city priorities, such as Mrs. Call's developmentally challenged playground project and others. This grant writer would be able to focus all of their energies into finding grants for the city. There are multiple options available to meet this objective. One is hire a grant writer on a commission-only basis, or number two, hiring a grant writer on a full-time, annual, biannual basis. Either way, just one grant would more than compensate the city for the cost of hiring an individual. I would also suggest that our H R director, Terry Wilson, be directed posthaste to begin a search for a grant writer who would report to council. Time's a-wasting. One other idea recently floated by Mr. Denon this past week would be for the task force to issue a vitality downtown newsletter on a bi-monthly basis. This newsletter would be distributed to local businesses and posted in the newspaper, keeping our community aware of what we are doing for the downtown. This idea is in its infancy stages, but is moving forward, and I thank you for the time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, Mr. Johnson.
Well, I know everyone's sad that they didn't get to hear a very bad joke from Mr. Schultz tonight. Unfortunately, I don't have one to give you. So. I will just echo. I think that a grant writer is a good idea. I have heard, I know that a lot of us have said it's a good idea. I've always echoed a sentiment that, you know, I, I heard growing up, which is that, you know, closed mouths at the dinner table don't get fed. And so, if you're hungry, you know, you gotta speak up, is the idea. And if we're in need of some money and some help, you know, having someone to, to kind of reach out and advocate for some of those funds, trying to get those funds, that could be very beneficial and could easily pay for itself. So, I think it's a worthwhile thing to look at and maybe just get going on it, especially whenever, I mean, I hate to say this. I think sometimes, you know, we all want a playground to help the disabled and differently-abled children. But it almost seems like the playground is more challenged than the kids we're trying to help. We can't even get a, you know, some of this, some of this equipment. And I just want the people, without breaking the bank, I want the people of Washington Courthouse to be able to have nice things. Not necessarily the best things, but nice things. I think they deserve that. So, maybe a grant writer could help us do that, and I think, again, it would pay for itself and be a fiscally smart thing to do. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have that relationship with community action. We've also identified a firm in Columbus already. So, that, oh, that would be relatively easy to move along quite quickly.
Okay. Do we need legislation for that?
Hmm, probably not.
Okay.
The only thing I would mention is, one of our longtime excellent employees, Mr. Jim Heath, lost his beloved wife recently. I had a chance to go to that funeral last week, and I just wanted to tell Jim and their family that I'm thinking of them, and I know that that's a tough loss for him. Anyway, Sharon was one neat person. And it's a loss for the whole community, for that matter. With that, does somebody want to?
Mr. Lynch, one other issue. I hate to interrupt. R nine, the legislation concerning the property in the industrial park. You can have a special meeting, and we can get that moved along, or you can wait until next time around.
Well, is it a benefit to get it moving along?
The purchaser is happy and ready to go.
So, how do we feel, council?
Have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Ted?
Yeah. Good.
Phil?
That's fine.
Okay, when's, when's a good time? You have to give Kelly time to post it, or whatever needs to be done, but, in other words, it couldn't be tomorrow, but soon. How long do you need, Cal?
I mean, if I put it in, maybe tomorrow morning, if you guys decided, they'll be, they'll put it in the paper on the fifteenth for two days. It normally takes two, okay, yes.
Fifteenth to the nineteenth.
So.
Some time next week?
It's, it's, yes. So if you did it next week, if I can, if I knew now, I'll be able to put it in before I leave tomorrow.
Okay. It could be one of those very short meetings, gang, literally two or three minutes, so. Is it?
No, they didn't answer the meeting yet. They're, no, just posting it in the paper.
Is there a good day for you, Sylvia?
I could do the morning of the twentieth, as long as I'm wrapped up by ten.
Oh.
Ten o'clock is it, but.
If we, we could meet early, he does.
Yeah, you wanna do like nine A M. on the twentieth, or do you want even earlier than that? It's up to.
Nine.
I think Ted likes a little bit earlier than that even, right?
Yeah, seven thirty, six thirty.
Four thirty A M.
I'd like to have it on Valentine's Day, so I can bring my wife to.
It's a fun date, you know?
Uh, what day, do you have a calendar there, Caleb? What, the twentieth is what day?
The twentieth is Thursday.
Thursday?
Thursday, yes.
Is that quickly enough, Mr. City Manager?
That would be a huge improvement, yes.
Let's do the twentieth at
Anytime.
Nine?
Nine's perfect.
Eight thirty? I don't care.
Eight thirty'd be better for me.
Eight thirty.
How's that?
How about that?
Eight thirty. Okay.
Okay, Kelly, twentieth at eight thirty.
Okay. Just piece the legislation.
Okay. So, with that, anything else, Mr. Denon?
Nope.
Okay. With that, does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I will.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Crispin.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Call.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned at eight oh three.